Okay, folks, I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council Meeting of January 6th, 2020, to order with a moment of silent meditation and sit down today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and the motion to sit as a licensing board. Motion made in second, all those in favor? Aye, thank you. First up, number one, campground licenses for rules. Open a hearing on the renewal of the following campground licenses. Frontier Campground Park LLC, Scott Thompson, 188 Maxon Hill Road, Ashley. License for 225 camp sites and safari sites. Is anybody here from Frontier?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is Green Hill Campground Association, Inc., Jeffrey P. Aldridge, 13 Leeway Lane, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, license for 8 camp sites and safari sites. Holly Tree Campground, Marie, I think I saw Marie.
Are you?
Okay. It's 109 Ashley Road, Ashley, Rhode Island, license for 158 camp sites and safari sites. Bushering Pines Campground, Cameron May. WP Management Group LLC, 41 Sawmill Road, Hope Valley, license for 213 camp sites and safari sites. Next, Ashley Pines RV Resort LLC, Jen Smith, license coordinator. 225 Ashley Road, license for 260 camp sites, there are no safari sites. Okay, discussion? At least they have things paid and posted and all like this.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think I saw only one that was not paid for tangibles, am I correct? I think that was Ashley, but I'm not on the side, it was going to be... It was on the... Party? The party? His tangibles pastor. Okay. You're aware of the tangibles on the taxes?
No, I'm not, but I'll talk to my daughter, she handles all that.
Okay.
We'll clear it up if there's any problem.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that's the... So what do you think, subject to...
Well, when you make a motion to grant renewal to each license subject to all state regulations, you have to include any outstanding charges.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to grant renewal to the licensing is subject to all state and town regulations and all town taxes being prior to issue.
Okay, motion made in second, any further discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for all doing your great job.
Thank you, folks.
And it can be a quiet.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, consent agenda group town council meeting minutes of December 16th, 2019, executive session minutes of December 16th, 2019, special town council meeting minutes of December 9th, 2019, executive session minutes of December 2nd, 2019, accepted November 25th, 2019. Transcript as the record of the hearing regarding central business systems, James and Karen Scherentia, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, February 8th, 2020, as the second town council meeting in February due to President's Day holiday. Approved request on National Grid and Verizon for a joint poll on Skunkville Road. Approved $72.76 from the Town Council contingency line item, number 5065-10001, presented in flower arrangement. Approved abatement resulting from 2019 motor vehicle tax value change submitted by the tax assessor. Approved refund due a local payment on 2019 motor vehicle tax submitted by the tax collector.
I still have a question about the National Grid. So, a motion to approve Town Council meeting minutes, and the consent agenda, other than the National Grid project.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Sharon.
I just wanted to know, do the new polls and anchor have anything to do with the Slumfield Solar Project? If they're making more calls?
I imply from 2:10 the same question, and he said it was completely unrelated. It's just a poll between two existing polls to reduce the distance between the two polls.
And he's putting an anchor on that one, which is good, because you need to do more of that. That was my only question. Motion to approve the consent agenda group, National Grid and Verizon, close to location there.
Okay, motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we got first public forum, I want to just change up a little bit from what we've done in the past, not by a lot. Put some time restrictions on the public forums for the first and second one, 10 minutes max per person, 30 minutes in total. First public forum will be to comment, make comments on anything on the agenda, second public forum anything not on the agenda, okay? Works great, if we need to tweak it, we will go forward. Solicited information from the council at the last meeting in the public, and I thought that should be a nice compromise. Next up, under my report, I attended the wake, as did, I think, Barbara, Bill, and... Oh, I'm sorry, folks, I'm sorry to interrupt. Anyone wishing to comment on anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, thank you. Council president report, I attended Superintendent Barrett Ritchie's wake on December 27th, as did, I think, Barbara, Bill, I'm not sure if anyone else did, but it was very well attended and sorry to see him go. He always battled about budgetary items, but he was always very cordial.
I think he's a friend in respect and tolerance.
I would say that I enjoyed Darren Ritchie, even though I disagree with him, and I know that I was one of the bad people from Hopkins that questioned travel pleasure, but he was very cordial and, you know, seeing him at the Ashley School thing was really good because it was the last time I did see him, and he was very cordial and he was educated to the last, and I said that, I think that says a lot about him. I can't remember the story exactly for what time I was joking around with him, and he could take your joke and take kidding, which I think is really good in public life, and some people just can't do that, but I appreciated his attitude and agreed with several budgets and things of that nature, but you know, you can't take what we do so seriously that we dislike somebody because we don't agree or she sings the same way.
He also moved into that heavy lifting Charahoe, has become one of the best districts in the state and in, I'm sure, part of the region, and it was all because of his creativity, his organic movement where he could move quickly and take advantage of things that were coming down the pike. He really changed the quality of the education in all these three towns. He will be extraordinarily hard to replace.
And I will say, I attended the celebration at Ashley Elementary School for their becoming a blue ribbon school, and she was there, and I will say, obviously, the results of spending the budget, the Charahoe budget, you have good results, and I can't fault that, but I still think there's a million dollars in there extra, and I'll be fighting them.
Yeah, so anyway, but yeah, he was, he'll be missed, even a couple weeks before he passed, he and I were exchanging text messages about the audit, because we had some questions at our meeting, and he said, certainly just call me, and so again, to Scott's point, he ran up to the end, would talk about the school and its budget and its operations, and he worked that Friday and passed away on Sunday, so anyway, sorry to see him go. Next, under old business, number one, discuss and consider a motion to remove from the table the ongoing public hearing suspended on October 28th, 2019, on petition for amendments to the Hopkinton zoning ordinance of Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan, future land use map filed by Atlantic Solar LLC, 260 West Exion Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02903, and Atlantic Control Systems, Inc., 318 Drive Ridge Road, North Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02865, the landowner for property located at Zero Main Street identified as plat 7, lot 32, plat 10, lot 87, plat 11, lot 35, an RFP zone, and if appropriate to set a date, time, and location for the resumption of the public hearing as requested by the applicant's attorney, Robert Brayden Esquire. So I guess it's back to the original plan from the modified, whatever, plan of that hearing that we had, we ran into an issue then, so we need to, I guess, revert back to the original plan and we need to, I guess, resume the hearing, so Lisa, what are your thoughts on the resumption dates possible?
I can give you options for dates, and I'm speaking with the school district today, based on whether or not you'd decide to make a motion to remove this from the table, you know, if that's an inappropriate action at this point, but to give you some suggested dates, I got in touch with the school district today to see if there was availability of the Saran Memorial School on the 27th of January, and it is. I also asked about February 10th and February 24th, those are our alternate Mondays of the month in February, and they are, that school area is available.
I'm going to see the 27th, we're going to give it as soon as possible, because we're going to get into our budget.
I'd like a comment.
Yeah, hold on one second, Kevin, you want to weigh in on something?
Yeah, we're going to do this, the proper procedure we have to follow is there has to be first a motion to remove it from the table, have to do that separately from setting the dates, so we'll need a second.
So the motion to remove it from the table?
Okay, motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like a comment.
And you're okay with the 27th?
Yes, because I believe I'm agreed. This, the people of this town and this council are really keyed off at the whole solar situation the last couple of years, generally speaking. This town council, we only make a stipend, and I'm not complaining about that, but a lot of the developers on these solar projects have been pulling out chain, the town council's chain, and they've been pulling the chain of the people of this town, and very frankly, I don't appreciate and want this in the record of this town. This councilman and very many residents, I think, concur with me on this, that how we got here was you had an applicant who made a change after they submitted a proposal, and that, in my view, is bad form, and I want to say that on the record. Thank you.
I'd also like to say, please, councilor, speak for yourself as far as who's pulling who's changing.
Okay. All right. All right, so we had the motion and we had approval for the removal from the table, now we need to try and schedule the resumption of the hearing under the original application. I think Sharon, Barbara were good with 1:27, I'm okay with that. And Scott, you look, you're okay with 1:27?
Yes, I believe that that's Monday night.
And that's all we have?
That's the only that can be heard, if we have to, and I believe we have to, re-advertise and send a butter move.
And send a butter move.
Is that about enough time?
It is just, just.
And the motion will need to state the date, time, place of the hearing.
Okay, and the place was what, the middle school, was it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so just let me...
And time?
Yep.
7:30?
Seven.
7? When you go into the month of January, at this point, the elementary schools are usually booked because the recreational programs are ongoing for the past few weeks, so I didn't even ask.
All right, so you guys want to do 6:30 or 7?
Because at this point, there's no more to present from the...
Right? Correct.
There's no more to present from the developer, so it's really finalized in a minute, the public can have one more chance to talk, and then we can closer, it could be quick.
Okay, so I need a motion to state the time, date, and place.
I'll make a motion to schedule the hearing on January 27th, Monday, at 7:00 PM at Charahoe Memorial School.
Second. Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Here number two, under old business, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to send a letter to Centrica Business Systems regarding the status of the zoning amendment and comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment, future land use amendments, our petitions for the four remaining properties requested by Council Davis. First is Michael and Donna Church, 10 Grantville Extension, AP, 15 lot 11A. Next is Barney and Kay, Barney Spazaro, 40 Maxon Hill Road, Cecil's Plat 4, lot 38. C is Maitland, Father Hill, 10A, Crandall Lane, Cecil's Plat 2, lot 001, and the last one is St. Father Farmer, 0 Richway, Cecil's Plat 7, lot 20.
And I've written the drafted letter that we consent, and it says, although, I think we need to send it to Centrica and the attorney and the owners of those properties. It says, "Dear Attorney Kamoli, the town council has asked me to request that you send written updates of the status of the zoning amendment and comprehensive plan, future land use amendment petitions for the four properties listed below to the Hopkinton Town Council and Town, I'm sorry, Hopkinton Town Clerk and Town Council members by January 21st, 2020." And it lists those four properties. "It has been a year since the original filings, and we need to know if you are moving forward or withdrawing these petitions. If you want to move forward, please request that the petitions be scheduled immediately with the town council. Additional advertising and letters notifying the abudders at your expense will also be required. Sincerely, and I put it in town clerk's list." Yes.
The only suggestion I would have is that last sentence. They have not been advertised at all, so I'll just revise that a little bit and just remind them that any advertising and budget notices in a scheduling schedule will be payable by August.
Then in that case, if you can just say, "All advertising and letters notifying the abudders at your expense will also be required."
Motion to approve all those seconded.
It states that on the applications, any white box, and I'd like to put that one there.
It's standing on the freeze.
Okay.
All right, so I think we have a motion there.
I'll make a motion to...
Send this out as intended.
Okay. Motion made in second, any further discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, new business, number one, discuss, consider, and possibly vote on the reappointment of Margaret Steele Esquire as municipal court judge for a term of two years to November 2021.
Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, motion made in second.
As I have a matter pending in municipal court, I am going to abstain from voting on this appointment, thank you.
Motion made in second, all those in favor of her appointment?
Aye.
Aye. Extention, extensions?
Extension.
Okay, extension, only extension, thank you. Okay. Next, number two, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to adopt a resolution in support of fully funded E911 statewide municipal services requested by Council Powell. Do you have a floor, Bob?
We received a resolution in support of fully funding statewide services, Governor Tom Charleston, I think that you should agree with them. Their concern is that the fire rescue and ambulance corps in the state response times in rural areas are up to 10 to 15 minutes, which is a product of distance and antifragility improvement, and they wish to have the revenue source completely and fully funded by the state program for the enhanced 9/11 so that it can use the GPS tacking for cell phones, emergency medical dispatch, and have a full range of services needed to communicate with Rhode Islanders who may find themselves in highly stressed emergency crises, and we certainly have seen any number of those recently. So this resolution is to fully support the E911 statewide municipal services and to urge the governor to convene the E911 commission to oversee the resolution, any inadapts in the 9/11 system. I'll solve the motion that we said the resolution is supported fully funded E911 statewide and municipal services.
Okay, motion made in second, any further discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Number three, under new business, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Scott Ahern as the three ward for one area, for a one term in January 2021. Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up, boards, commissions, and committees. Number one, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to accept Sylvia Stanley's resignation from the Charahoe School Committee.
Sylvia with regret.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further comment, or do you... Scott, do you have any comments on this?
Not at all.
Anyway, one thing I think he's going to make a comment on, he doesn't, but anyway. Anyway, I want to thank her.
Charlie just called.
I want to thank her for her service, but you know, I have to admit, you know, it's been a struggle with some of the school committee members in trying to get them to, in my opinion, their responsibilities are dual. They've got to provide quality education, they also have to be mindful of the taxpayers, and I think that latter point fell on deaf ears at times, and so I'm a bit frustrated with that, but again, I want to thank her for her service, and I guess we'll accept her resignation, but we'll have to find somebody else to replace her for a three-year term.
She served well, and I'm sorry that she was on, but I understand her reasons.
As we had a motion made in second, no further discussion, all of those in favor of accepting her resignation from the school committees, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, next up, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to authorize a town clerk to advertise the vacancy on the Charahoe School Committee.
I have a draft vacancy ad. It reads, "The Hopkinton Town Council hereby give notice that we have applications from Hopkinton residents wishing to be appointed to fill a vacancy on the Charahoe School Committee to November 2022. Interested individuals should submit a letter of interest in a resume to the Office of the Town Clerk, One Town House Group, Hopkinton, RI, on or before January." Do you want a particular date in there?
No.
I do.
I know, I want a particular date, but I'm not sure the end of January, I want to move it to February.
You can do that. Do you want to target?
February 10th.
February 10th?
Is that...
That's definitely...
That seems like a far one to...
When is that, when are our meetings in December?
The council meetings are the 3rd and the 18th.
If somebody's interested, we don't, are you applying? I'm extending it out to 2:10.
I just thought I'd give people a little time.
They want to or they don't.
Well, they should be, I know that they should be going to those school committee meetings and seeing what it's about and seeing if they could be helpful or not helpful. People don't even go to them, they don't even know what's there unless they're watching it on television, maybe. I would like someone to go who actually knows what the, what's happening, what happens at their meetings and how you can be a part of it and make a difference. So I thought maybe they would go.
I...
Okay, so you could give...
We all look at these things differently. I will let it to date that this is a political appointment, the school committee, the school budget controls 75% of the property taxes in town of Hopkinton, and one of the things I want from the town clerk, and won't be in advertisement, is I want to know the political affiliation of every applicant in the school committee. It's a partisan political office, and that's a reality, the town council is a partisan political office.
Did Sylvia Stanley Grant as an independent from that?
Yeah. Correct, she was independent, so perhaps we can do independent again.
And I will be checking, thank you.
I'll get back to my original question. Today is the 6th, so I can get this probably into the newspaper for Friday, the 10th, that's usually is it, who's done very well, people don't get the paper anymore, or they get it only in the weekends, we'll put it on the website as well. Maybe we should put it in the Charahoe Times, and maybe two weeks, and that would bring it to, we could go to like January 48th, that would be...
That's fine. January 28th is fine, but we are not going to appoint someone on a political basis, we will appoint someone who's more competent.
Each one of us has their own voting reasons for supporting.
Well, he does not have to tell us.
I guess I've thrown out, thank you.
So, all right, so 28th, all right, there you go.
That's the term date, right?
Yes.
All right, great. Okay, last public forum, anything not on the agenda, 10 minutes per person, total of 30 minutes in total for the public forum. Mr. Buck.
Hey, good seeing you guys again, it's been a while. Thomas Buck, Lepin Church Street National, how about those fireworks? You guys want to see those?
It's gonna be awesome.
They're a little bit of a...
Getting tougher and tougher, they're not top there for the next year.
Free zone tonight is discuss the 1904 building, liaison still through the council. Tomorrow night at 6:30, where we are sitting, we'll be having a meeting here concerning the 1904 building. We've invited the Charahoe school committee members.
Yeah, they have a budget meeting tomorrow, a town council, a school committee meeting.
Okay, well, they always have time to reason.
Yeah, I don't think it's a meeting, don't want a meeting.
But we're, I know we've got some town manager to come and anybody else with like six and eleven town councils there, as the budget season is coming up, you're going to have to work some magic if possible to be able to fund that. It's going to be a very tight timeline, we're going over issues concerning the RFP and other issues that we have to deal with in order to get this thing done, because we're looking at a starting time of June 21st, I think is the last day of school, so it'd be right after that for the elementary to let out, and then school starts, I think, September, so everything's got to be done, cleaned up, and finished by that timeframe.
What time was this?
6:30, 6:30 tomorrow.
Now, I'll see if you have a bunch of meeting, Tom, I would love to talk to you about that.
Anytime, call me sometime, I should have a server out in the woods that helped me hang two minutes.
No, I'll just call you, but I'd rather be with you than the school budget hearing tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what we set out, my biggest concern is we tried to save as much things that are in the school, I mean, I know you and I discussed the people, and I have somebody who is radioing in the background to probably throw up a gazelle for us, for the kids that are sitting there out front, but we tried to save these chalkboards, these old windows, you and I have discussed about the doors for the town hall, they would fire codes, they don't allow that stuff anymore, but we sent out 15 of them, all the way out to Pennsylvania, New Hampshire, Ramon, sub-local restoration companies and stuff like that, and we had a little bit of a feed that by one company, and then we had to send them photos and stuff like that, nothing, nobody, I mean, I personally would love to have those rafters in the sale, because I guarantee that they're all chestnut, they're huge, chestnut leaves. So yard and plant would be great, greatly appreciate it tomorrow night, if anybody uses a rebuild, and Xavier, you want to sing a bit?
Good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Joe.
Gilmore Road, Old Depot Road, Happy New Year. I just need a clarification on this proposal that Mr. Craven just talked about at Zero Main Street. I was hoping I could ask him the question, but I believe this project is the one that went back to almost October of 2018 or November, so it's been in the pipeline for quite a while, but my question is, predict the date of the application. I don't... is, relative to date of the application, I don't know, and I don't know if the council realizes, is this proposal back to the three lots or the four lots?
Three. The original application, which had three.
And that's what he's going to proceed with is three. Okay, then that would answer the question about the remailing and anything else. So it's back to three. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Dick.
I guess we'll be looking at number three. 30 minutes. Oh, I'm going to try to cut to the J. He's quick. He's quick. I just want to share a few thoughts. It may be already too late to do this, Dick, about in Hope Valley and Lisa Lane. Since the last meeting, I've had a little bit of time to think about new rules going forward. And I wanted to point out just before, that in my mind, one of the real advantages of being in a community of 8,000 people as opposed to a city of 8,000 people is that we feel that we know, members of our government, that there's a personal relationship, and that we feel that, you know, the people that are neighbors that we see all the time, that we see at work. And I think we feel, I don't want to use empowered, that's a tyrant term, but I think we feel that we're stakeholders in the community. And in part, we feel that way because this give and take exists. And I think that's a very positive thing. But it's a double edged sword, and I get that, which is that there are times when it's important that we have this dialogue, but none of us want to be here for three and a half hours every opportunity for all time. So that said, it seems to me that there is a very straightforward way of saying, we don't need, we're not encouraging resident participation. And that is to say, if a dozen people show up, you may sit here for two and a half hours and not have an opportunity to say a word. And so under that circumstance, essentially, I think it's just telling people, stay home. And I think we want to be encouraging, not discouraging people. I certainly understand the need to keep people on topic. Sometimes people are off topic, sometimes they ramble. And I certainly draw the, of the council and the council president to direct that, to say that, okay, we're monitoring, it's irrelevant. But at the same time, I think if 10 people show up, seven of them know at the beginning of the meeting, they're not going to get to speak at all. And I think the only effect of that would be to discourage people from coming and to discourage people from making themselves known. And I thought when I read it the last time, that it was pretty ironic that I'm standing here with the town motto that says not to be silent. So I think if we're going to go forward with that, we probably want to get some white out, take those first two words off. But I think dialogue is important. I get it. I understand that. When the council is in agreement with the residents, everything's lovely, but you're only to be. Unfortunately, the time when it becomes important is that somehow we're out of step, and at least it allows us to express this feeling that we're not being heard. So I think the effect of this would be simply to tell people, stay home. Don't, we're not interested in hearing what you have to say.
Anyone else?
Tim Ward, 42 River Road, Ashway. So just real quickly, I'm thinking about the zoning changes and applications, and I know there are some in the pipeline, and maybe some still yet to come, and some underway. I'm going to make a suggestion to the council that they consider requiring from any applicants a substantial sum of money, yet to be determined, you'd have to talk about that further, that the town would use to hire an expert consultant to guide the council throughout the entire process of each application, including but not limited to helping the town determine an appropriate escrow amount for site cleanup after the life of the solar project is completed. We know that we're in over our heads with this. We're not experts. You folks aren't experts in this. Our town manager's not an expert in this. So I'm suggesting that we get some experts in to guide our thinking and our decision-making beyond just legal means as we move forward through these processes.
That's something that the planning board is taking on the decommissioning, if that's what you're talking about?
That's, that's part of it, but not, not limiting to that.
And the reforestation, the planning.
Yeah, okay.
Board is, is going to be considering those two topics, and they are going to work with, you know, Prossman or somebody else.
Okay, great.
So that's already in the.
So that's part of it. But I'm saying even from the beginning phases through the end. Because we're in over our heads. And if anybody's not willing to admit that, I'll be honest with you, that's a little scary. It's okay to admit that we don't know something, but it's a little more scary to say, oh, we know everything.
Tim's talking about the very first hearing, you know, getting us getting consultant to guide us through the process.
You know, even, even, I have to be honest with you, in education for 28 years, I'm kind of amazed that we don't have PowerPoint presentations on these projects, and we have a little poster cardboard piece on easel. Look where we are in technology. Look at what year it is. Starting a new decade, maybe we could infuse a little technology into this so people in the audience can see and really gain an understanding of what's going on. Because this little cardboard cutout, I sit in the second row, and I can't see what's going on. Just, you know, so that's just one small piece, the reforestation and decommissioning, that's another piece. But I think there's a whole lot to this package. And then aside from those, if I could just ask Mr. Davis a real quick question. So your draft letter that you spoke to earlier for those four landowners and those applicants, I think I understand the purpose of that letter, to kind of speed things along and kind of let us know what direction people want to go in. What happens, what's the other side of that, I guess? What if they don't do something? Is there a time limit? Is there a timeframe?
Well, I put you, I said January 21st. So if they did not respond by the 21st, I think we have the right to say, you know, obviously, you're not going forward, and we will delete them from the process.
So, so is that the intent of the council?
That's a thought.
That's a thought. I don't know how to make sure that happens.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to see, like, what's the end and of that letter?
Oh, yeah.
State law says reasonable time. Reasonable time is a big word. And so it could be two years, three years, four years, that can still be considered reasonable.
Yeah, so we have to follow state law.
And originally, we, the town had to respond within, say, 90 days or something at some point. And they waived that. So we don't have to respond within 90 days, but at the same time, they also didn't bring those projects forward.
Right.
So, you know, it's sort of like sitting here forever. So I think, January 21st, we ought to know which way we're going. And then we can schedule them and get them.
They're finding their way in. There are legal implications to this process, right? Because we, obviously, if they're submitted and deemed complete, we do have to hear them statutorily. But I think, Sharon, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think what your intent also is to find out if any of these require any zone changes.
Well, those are the ones. They all require.
Yeah, there's one that I know that is not going to on that list.
They haven't said that yet.
No, right. I only know because I know the person. So, so there may be applicants on that list that are not going to be requiring zone changes because they're farms.
Maybe they are.
Yeah. So I don't think, I know at least one of the four is not going to be requiring a zone change.
Can you point out which, can you point out which one that is?
Ron and Bonnie.
And Spossada.
Yeah, and then there's another, there's another farmer listed there that could also be not requesting a zone change.
So how do you define farm or farmer? Because you could have, you could have a state designation.
Yeah, there's a farm viability, so, which the maximum that they can put on, at least to their size, is three acres.
Yeah, that's not my question. So my question is yours, Frank, I think I heard you say they wouldn't require a zoning change because they are farm, a farm or farmers. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, are you going by the, so for example, somebody who owns more than 10 acres can be in the farm forestry program for tax payment with the state? Are you using that as a definition of what a farm is? I'm trying to get at what's.
So essentially, to answer your question, Tim, you have to have Schedule F income on your tax return?
Right, and that's part of that state designation.
Right, 2,500 or more, depending on the number of acres that you want to.
Right. Okay, so that's all on that state, that's.
Correct. It's Schedule F income strictly, pretty much. And it's got to be in the farm forest.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? A public phone?
Motion in memory of Nova C. Landbelk, Hope Green Andrews, and Darryl Gray.
Motion made a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Good night.